Welcome to the Davie County Planning Board meeting for the month of April 2021, which is now called to order. First order of business is to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
So, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes as written, raise your right hand. Okay, this is the public comment portion. Anyone who would like to bring an issue before the board that is not on the agenda, being one of the three rezoning requests, can come forward. All right, seeing none, we will move on to the zoning map amendment 2021-03. Mr. Meadwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you and I, as you mentioned, you have zoning map amendment 2021-03. This is a request by Clayton Properties Group. This is a request to rezone 3.963 acres of land consisting of two tracts from residential 20 and residential agricultural quality design overlay to residential 8. The subject properties are located adjacent to 470 NC Highway 801 North and are further described as Davie County Tax Maps C710901 and parcel C7140A008. These properties are part of the Braden at Bermuda Run subdivision project. And if you look in your attached maps, you could see that this portion of the property lies in the county's planning and zoning jurisdiction. These two tracts serve as the access point to that Braden subdivision, which is in the town's ETJ jurisdiction. So, that is the reason why this request comes to you. The request is to rezone to an R8 zoning classification. This is the most comparable designation that the county has that is comparable to the town of Bermuda Run's zoning designation for the piece of property. The subject piece of property is in a water supply watershed. So, if you look at what we have in terms of an R8 designation, this tract is included in that project, but for as part of the water supply watershed requirement. The density of this is going to be limited to what you see as part of that submitted site plan that is included in your agenda package. So, just the idea that you can go to an 8,000 square foot lot on 3.9 acres, you can't do that. They're not going to be able to get that number of homes as you normally would for a four acre site. This is all going to be included in part of those requirements, meaning the watershed requirements for the larger tract. So, that's the reason why you only see the mail kiosk and those six or seven home, eight homes right there. As I mentioned, right now, the subject property is vacant. There was one home that was attached to it there at 470 801, but they subdivided that off and Clayton Properties did buy this tract here. As I mentioned, this is in our jurisdiction. We've got it listed as residential home, our land development plan. It is in a secondary growth area. This comes to this board as a general use rezoning, so the board needs to really consider any of those uses that are in the R8 zoning classification. Utilities, public water, and sewer will be available to the site. That is part of the requirement for the Braden subdivision to serve the larger tract right there. But anything issues considered, as I said, this is a general use rezoning, but the board may approve, deny, or defer the request for additional consideration. What action the board should take tonight is either, one, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve; two, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to deny; or, three, defer the amendment for additional consideration. And I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the board has on this request right now.
I just had the one, I just had that one, Andrew, that, you know, that was about the ETJ, but you answered that question.
Yeah, and for the, just the board's knowledge, the developer did at, wanted to annex the entire piece, the big piece, as well as the four acres here, into the town's corporate limits, but the town made the decision not to include this in its municipal boundary. So, that's the reason why they're still developing under ETJ and in the county's jurisdiction.
I just had one clarification. You said this was most similar to the Bermuda Run classification, and is there anything drastically different, or are they just pretty much along?
No, I mean, with, and it's in the open space residential area for Bermuda Run, and in that district, for subdivision purposes, it allows additional densities if you provide open space area. So, a large portion of this tract, or the larger tract in Bermuda Run, is in open space, but the lot size dimensions are more comparable to what we have in the R8.
All right. Public comment, either for or against this request to rezone. If the applicant is here, I'd invite them to speak first, if they are.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for having me. Ken Capra. Sugar at Homes were actually a division of Clayton Properties Group. So, basically, you did an awesome job explaining what we're trying to do here. We don't want any kind of density whatsoever. We're just trying to get into the Braden property, and as you see, the R8 would allow multifamily. Nothing to do with that. We want six lots on four acres. So, that's all. We just want it to be contiguous to the rest of the development, so we're asking for you guys to consider that. And if there's any questions from you guys to us, be happy to answer them. And also the engineers here who designed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in favor of or against this request? All right. Seeing none, if there's any other discussion or questions for the applicant, none? Okay. I hear a motion, one way or the other?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Merriam Wright and a second. Mark, did I hear you? Any further discussion?
Can I read that?
Please.
Okay, the amendment promotes public health, safety, general welfare, and is consistent with all applicable adopted plans, and considers the action to be reasonable and in the best public interest. That said, approval furthers the goals, objectives, actions, and policies of the land development plan and growth enhancement strategy. It is in harmony with the surrounding residential area, and uses and promotes increased density on lots serviced by our public utilities that exist today.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving this rezoning request as stated, raise your right hand. Mr. Meadwell, would you like to introduce the next item, please?
Mr. Chairman, your next item on your agenda is zoning map amendment 2021-04. This is a request by KSRV LLC to rezone approximately three acres of land from residential 20 quality design overlay to highway business HB. The subject property is located at 123 Union Beecham Road and is further described as Davie County Tax Map parcel E741. I hope everyone has kind of knows the location of where we're at. It just has a historical landmark back behind Snoots there. So, as you can see, the current property is zoned R20. There are several highway business designated zoning properties in and around the piece of property. If the board recalls, you just recently rezoned a piece just to the east of this piece of property to highway business as well. I think that was two or three months ago. Currently, the subject piece of property is wooded. There were a couple of mobile homes on the property, but I think those have been removed, is my understanding. I think the applicant is here, and you may talk to the, talk to him and ask him about that. The area is in an area designated as a commercial mixed use on our land development plan, and it's in a primary growth area on the Davie County Growth Strategy map. The Highway Business zoning district is established principally for retail operations located on the roadways throughout the county. Public water appears to be available at the site, but private systems would have to be utilized as public sewer is not available. As I mentioned, this does come to the board as a general use rezoning, so the board would need to consider all those uses in the Highway Business zoning district for this piece, not one particular piece. And in your deliberation, you should consider the property's potential as a commercial use, the property's potential as a residential use, the property's location along a major arterial, and would the proposed reclassification be consistent with the overall character and existing development in the immediate vicinity and the subject property? One of the actions that the board should consider is, one, move for the rezoning that the following statement be adopted in support of the motion to approve; move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to deny; or defer the request for additional consideration. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you, and if the board has any additional questions, I'd be more than glad to answer those questions now.
Any questions for Mr. Meadwell before we start with the public comments? All right, I will invite the applicant to speak if they would like before we take any other public comments.
Rick Keane, applicant, I appreciate your considerations for my request, and I appreciate the assistance from Mr. Meadwell and his wife for preparing the application. Don't have anything to add, I'll be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
Did you purchase the Snoots barbecue as well?
No, ma'am, no.
You just get the property behind you, is all you're asking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Have the trailers been removed?
No, this, we've got a contract on the property, and since, you know, if we receive the rezoning, we would, we would remove the properties. There's an abandoned trailer, and then another one that's in the woods, and some other debris that we'll clean up and haul away.
What type of business do you plan to put there, can I ask?
For general business use, I own the advanced RV storage facility in the property there on the corner of Redland, and that's one consideration. I'm at capacity, actually have a waiting list. I've probably turned away 40 customers in the last 12 months, so that's something I'll possibly be considering.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If anyone else would like to speak in favor of or against this rezoning request, feel free to step forward. All right, seeing none, we'll close that portion, and...
Mr. Chairman, just one, just to clarify, this does come to the board as a general use rezoning, and although Mr. King has indicated a use that he does own and have, the board should consider all those uses within that Highway Business zoning district for your deliberation.
Any other questions, discussions? Or a motion?
Well, from looking at the map, it seems to be in harmony with the land use plan. I'd move to approve.
I second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Bowen, would you mind reading the, all the text there, please?
Move that the following statement be adopted to approve, and a, to a statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve. The amendment promotes public health, safety, and general welfare. It is consistent with all applicable adopted plans, and considers the action to be reasonable and in the public interest. That said, approval furthers the goals, objectives, and actions policies of the comprehensive plan because it is in harmony with the surrounding area it uses, and it is in the designated commercially zoned property.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the motion as written, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on your agenda is zoning map amendment 2021-05. This is a request by Block House Properties LLC to rezone 6.6 acres of land from residential 20 and residential agricultural to industrial 2, to match the existing two acres of I-2 zoning on the same subject piece of property. The subject piece of property is located at 1765 Peoples Creek Road and is further described as Davie County Tax Map G8120B302. Including your agendas, you do see a zoning map which identifies the subject piece of property. We've outlined the requested area in red. The subject piece of property or the current zoning, where the I-2 is highlighted in pink. As you can see on the current zone piece of property, there is a facility located there that is an industrial type use. The remaining portion of the property that, for the request, you see a drive as well as a barn type structure on the piece of property. This area is designated on the land development plan as commercial, commercial mixed use. It's identified as a rural growth area on the Davie County Enhancement Strategy map. The subject piece of property was originally zoned in 1973. The proposed I-2 zoning request is, is a broad category of industrial uses within four different subgroups. If you look in our zoning ordinance, the designations that we have are I-1 to I-4. This thing and I-2, this is on the lower end of our industrial spectrum. Public water is available to the site. Issues to consider, this again, does come to the board as a general use rezoning within the I-2 district. The board may approve or deny or defer the request for additional consideration, but should just consider all those uses that would be allowed in that I-2. So, the other issues to consider is the property's potential as an expansion of existing industrial development. And just for kind of clarification, there's a survey in, in your package too, just to kind of show you the, the two different tracts, 2A, 2B, just for clarification, but we've outlined it all in red, just, so if you have any questions about that, that kind of shows you the makeup of the two tracts right there. So, the planning board should consider, one, the following actions. Either, one, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve; two, move that a following statement be adopted in support of a motion to deny; or, three, defer the request for additional consideration. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you, and if you have any additional questions for me, I'll be more than glad to answer those at this time.
Anyone have anything for Mr. Meadwell? What are the things that are already built in that would require buffers from this if it's rezoned against the residential properties?
So, if, if you look at our landscaping requirements, it's, it's based on, the type of buffer or buffer sizes are based on the actual zoning district that the property is and to what is the adjacent. So, so this being industrial to, next to a residential, you'll have a higher standard type buffer requirement there. These are all looked at when, if, if the property is developed and, you know, the board approves it, or the board commissioners approve, and there is a decision to apply for a development permit, a site plan will be submitted, and that's when in our TRC, our Technical Review Committee, we look at how the, the proposal or the development, how it complies with each of our zoning requirements. So, so buffers being one of those setbacks, things like that.
Is that like a 20-foot vegetated buffer in this case?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
I believe that's correct.
All right, anything else? We'll open the public comment, invite the applicant to come forward if the wish first.
I'm Andy Mossman. I'll take any questions that you have.
So, Andy, you're not the land owner, right?
Yes, ma'am.
You are the land owner?
Yeah, Block House Properties was just incorporated to purchase the two acres and the adjacent six.
Okay, but you already own the Pro Tools business?
I did not own the business.
Yeah.
I didn't own the property until February.
Oh, gotcha. So, Mr. Van, what's his name?
Van Enenberg.
Yeah, is he here? Is, I mean, is he, he's no longer the owner?
He's no longer the owner.
Okay. So, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Is the house owned by the folks that own the other property, or is that separate?
No, ma'am. That house was purchased.
Mr. Van, what's his name?
John Brier owns it.
Oh.
They purchased it in February this year.
So, he's aware of what you're doing?
Yes, ma'am. I've contacted all of the neighbors.
Okay.
Okay.
So, basically, you're just looking to expand your existing footprint you're building?
Not at the moment. My plan is to utilize the barn for, I'm warehousing equipment in two different counties, and in South Carolina, I'd like to consolidate that, bring it in-house.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in favor of or opposition to this rezoning request? All right, seeing none. Any further discussion? Or a motion?
I make a motion, motion to approve, yes.
Okay, Ella, please.
Do I need to read this?
Please.
Okay. I move that the following statement be adopted in support of the motion to approve. The amendment promotes public health, safety, and general welfare, is consistent with the general, the several applicable adopted plans, and considers the action to be reasonable and in public interest. That said, approval furthers the goal, objectives, actions, maps, and policies of comprehensive plan because it's in harmony with surrounding areas and uses. It fits in the county's future plan, use, use plans, and designated commercial on the land use map, and is, is in the vicinity of a commercially industrial zoned property.
Okay, we have a motion, and did someone second, second?
I got Merriam's.
Okay. All right, motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No, it's consistent with the land development plan and in the area that's designated commercial mixed use.
I like the fact that, you know, I don't think we're going to see much difference there. This is not a situation, even though it's really in an area that you wouldn't naturally think would be good for industrial use like this, with the Pro Tools business already being there, and this being rezoned to industrial. It's not like this is going to continue to sprawl in that area. That's it. It's, it's surrounded by what is going to be residential light use for the foreseeable future, so I like it.
I agree with Jeff, for sure.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? A little coffee question, all in favor of approving the rezoning as stated, raise your right hand. All right, that one is also unanimous. Thank you. All right, text amendment?
Mr. Chairman, before you and I, you have a text amendment to section 155.120, 155.125, 155.147, 155.160, and 155.172. This is an amendment to re-designate or rename our industrial districts. As you've kind of seen from our previous rezoning, I'd say that currently, right now, the county has four industrial zoning districts, and what staff is proposing is, is to combine the I-1, I-2, and I-3 to be labeled as a general industrial district. If you look at the current... If you look at the current table of uses and the actual description of what these I one, I two, and I three, there is really no difference in between those uses that are allowed in those three zoning, zoning districts. The I four, which is currently our, you know, most intensive industrial classification, would be renamed to a heavy industrial, HI. So, so this is what this text amendment proposes, I think, from staff's endpoint and even from just general public or, you know, industrial type applicants or users. This really makes it a little more easier to understand, a little easier for staff to interpret as to what districts you actually go to. So we've, we've modified some of the uses in, like our manufacturing yard, to move those things out of like the, that were in like an I three to make sure they're completely in the I four, the, like the paper mill, things of that nature. But, but throughout the, through the orange, we've had to go in and modify the requirements for the landscaping, you know, setbacks, things of that nature. So I hope you had a chance to kind of look at this, but if you need more clarification as to what we're doing, we've highlighted in yellow those type uses that are going to be general industrial, and the blue, which would be the I four, would be what would be staying in the heavy industrial. So I'll turn that over to you, Mr. Chairman, for a discussion, but if you have questions, we'll be more than glad to answer those.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Meadwell?
I do. Andrew, on this list that we have, it says agricultural, and it says agricultural use, not bona fide farms, and it's got the PC out beside of all that. Does that, does that have to do with solar farms? It would be the second one on that bottom of the page.
Okay. Well, that's not actually included.
That's not, we're not changing any of that?
No.
Okay.
And, and the PC is permitted with conditions. So certain agricultural uses have exemptions applied to them through general statute. However, we recognize that although, you know, our, generally our residential agricultural zoning district or even R twenty, you may have certain agricultural uses that are occurring in those zoning districts that may not be considered a bona fide farm as per statute or how it defines what a bona fide farm is. So that's the only reason why that, you see that PC there, is that it's permitted with conditions, but this has nothing to do with the text amendment that you're, that you're having. Those uses will not change.
So the solar farm, we never had that as part of our, as part of our classes? The solar farm down below, like I think it's like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight on the list?
Right. It's still, yeah, nothing changes about it.
It's always been that way?
It has always been that. As a permitted with conditions in the SP.
And does it still have to go before a board, like we've been hearing?
That's correct. That's correct. Currently, right now, it follows the same process. If, if, if we did not have property already zoned SP, if someone wanted to do that, they would still follow the same rezoning process that you've seen tonight.
All right. That sounds good.
Is there any public comment regarding this text amendment? Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Or a motion?
Make a motion to approve. The amendment promotes public health, safety, general welfare, and is consistent with all applicable adopted plans and considers action to be reasonable in the public's interest. That said, approval furthers the goals, objectives, and actions policies of the land development plan and growth enhancement strategy by clarifying industrial uses and standards for, from ranking a system to a simpler classification system.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. So our next meeting will be in May, we're going to have it on the eighteenth at three o'clock right here, again, a little different time, so just pay attention to that. Anything else? Nothing else? Make a motion, we adjourn. In a second. And all in favor? Thank you.